Good evening. Welcome to the April 2nd regular Town Council meeting. May I have Counselor Breton, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the Town Clerk please take attendance?
Counselor Breton?
Here.
Counselor Forrest?
Here.
Counselor Hurley?
Here.
Counselor Latina may be late. Counselor Lesser?
Here.
Counselor Ralph?
Here.
Counselor Spinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martino?
Here.
And Mayor Morin Bell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is a proclamation for National Health Week, April 2nd through the 6th. And I believe we have members of the Central Connecticut Health District here tonight. Okay, if you'd come on up. Meet you at the podium. Okay. Our first proclamation, whereas the American Public Health Association has proclaimed April 2nd through the 8th as National Public Health Week, and whereas this year's theme is Healthiest Nation 2030, Changing Our Future Together, and focuses on rallying around the goal of making the United States the healthiest nation in one generation by 2013, 2030. And for over 20 years, the annual celebration of National Public Health Week reminds us of the fundamental role that our town and state departments play every day in the health of our communities. And whereas the town of Weathersfield, together with its neighboring towns of Berlin, Newington, and Rocky Hill, receive quality public health service through its regional health department, the Central Connecticut Health District, now in its 22nd year of awareness and service to our community. Now therefore, I, Amy Morin Bellow, Mayor of the town of Weathersfield, on behalf of the Town Council, do hereby proclaim April 2nd to April 8th, 2018, National Public Health Week in Weathersfield, Connecticut, and encourage all our citizens to join in and acknowledge the critical role of public health in helping individuals and communities achieve and maintain good health. And witness whereof, by the authority vested in me as mayor, I hereunto set my hand and seal of the town of Weathersfield to be affixed the second day of April 2018. Thank you. Our next proclamation is in recognition day of national service. Do we have members of the audience here? So whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families. And whereas Weathersfield is a very strong volunteer community, not only our volunteer fire department, which is the oldest continuing department in New England, and our volunteer ambulance association, but also our members on boards and commissions. And whereas national service creates more sustainable, resilient communities, providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas Weathersfield service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to helping which remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with county officials and mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and foster civic engagement. Now therefore, I, Amy Morin Bellow, Mayor of the town of Weathersfield, do hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2018, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact they have, not just in Weathersfield, but Connecticut, and also by participating with others in national service in our country, to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities. And witness whereof, by the authority vested in me as mayor, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Weathersfield to be affixed this second day of April 2018. There you are. Would any of you like to speak?
So hello, my name is Logan Singerman. I moved to Weathersfield when I was eight. I had Mrs. Forrest as my third grade teacher. Then I graduated from Marshall High School in 2009, went to college, and after that, kind of was figure out what I was going to do with my life. And I did three years of AmeriCorps. And so when I think of my years of service, I think that it will lead to a life of service. And I know that when people talk about my generation, there's mixed reviews. But when people talk about the greatest generation, the reviews aren't as mixed. And I think part of the reason why we call that generation the greatest generation is because they had an opportunity to serve. And so when it comes to national service and when it comes to volunteering, I think that if we want the reviews to be less mixed, we need to give people more opportunities to serve. And so I'm super thankful for the opportunity I had, serving in Hartford for three years, changed my perceptions, and now I just feel equipped. I'm a much more, I guess, committed member of our societal fabric. Like, I didn't show up to city council meetings when I was in high school, but I definitely would now, because I understand better how the world works. So anyway, thank you so much for your support. Yeah, we're just, we're super thankful and have a great council meeting.
And our last proclamation is a Diabetes Heart Health Awareness Day. Whereas 354,240 people in Connecticut, or 11.3% of the adult population, have diabetes, including an estimated 93,000 who are undiagnosed, and an additional 997,000 people, over 36% of the adult population have prediabetes. And whereas every year, an additional, an estimated 11,000 people in Connecticut are diagnosed with diabetes, and adults with diabetes are two to four times more likely to die from heart disease than adults without diabetes. Whereas diabetes and prediabetes cost an estimated $4 billion in Connecticut each year through serious complications, including heart disease, stroke, amputation, end-stage kidney disease, blindness, and death. And whereas the Central Connecticut Health District, which is headquartered in Weathersfield and serves as our local health district, has promoted diabetes awareness on their website and through educational programs. And whereas at least 68% of people who are 65 or older and who have diabetes die from some form of heart disease, and the American Heart Association considers diabetes to be one of seven major controllable risk factors for cardiovascular disease. Now therefore, I, Amy Morin Bellow, Mayor of the town of Weathersfield, do hereby proclaim April 10th, 2018, as Diabetes Heart Health Awareness Day in Weathersfield, and urge all citizens to raise public awareness about the specific risks of heart disease for people with diabetes, and help to ensure people at risk receive a timely diagnosis and proper treatment. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Weathersfield to be affixed this second day of April 2018. Okay, and next we have a presentation from the Weathersfield Public Library on their strategic plan. Good evening, Brooke.
Thank you, Mayor Bell. How people create, reassemble, search, share, receive, process, question, act upon information, disinformation, or fake news, is constantly evolving. Some in your community are embracing it, and some in your community are overwhelmed by it. The library is here to help. In order to meet the changing needs of our community, the Weathersfield Library Board sought to re-envision the library services that it provides. To that end, the library formed a strategic planning committee and enlisted consultants from MBNA to provide strategic planning services, which has resulted in a comprehensive, actionable, and forward-looking strategic plan for 2018 through 2023, which we would like to share with you this evening. The process. So some of you might have been involved in this. First, we formed a, the library board formed a strategic plan working group or committee. There were four community focus groups that was facilitated by MBNA. The consultants also conducted individual interviews with key community stakeholders, such as a member of the Board of Ed, town manager, EDIC, et cetera. An online community, an online and paper community survey was conducted last summer. There were over 600 responses. It is a treasure trove of information that at some point we would like to share more detailed information with you about. It's, it's really great, because it's your community responding. Library staff were involved, they were engaged, they're the ones who are going to implement the plan. Their input and feedback was key. This included a staff survey, interviewed staff at all different levels, and we held a staff retreat as well. Research was conducted, we did an environmental scan to do comparisons of what's going on in surrounding libraries. We looked at 21st century library practices, one of the best practices. And then there is a report that I've shared with most of you, and if I haven't gotten it to you, I'm happy to do so, the Aspen Institute Report, which is called Rise Into the Challenge. And that was put out a couple of years ago, and it was funded by the Gates Foundation. And they had done so much work with libraries as they were wrapping up, looking at global health became more their focus. They tried to have a template for public libraries to look, to utilize, and then, so that was included. And then just the committee meeting with the consultants and reviewing the findings, are we drawing the right conclusions from all of the data that we've gathered from the community and the research that we have done?
Hi, everybody. Hannah Granfield, thanks for having us tonight. Weathersfield residents who responded to the community survey were invited to list three words that they wish described Weathersfield. If you look at the cloud bubble, the word bubble right now, you can see some of those words that our community wished that our town was. So they wish that we're friendly, that we're safe, we're inclusive, and we're informed. So it's kind of important for you to take a second and check that out. The importance of the library in the eyes of Weathersfield residents was made clear by the conversations and the survey responses. This word cloud describes, shows what residents say currently describes our library today. Welcoming, helpful, they have lots of programs, community. Think if you've been to the library lately, you would agree with those same words on the board. In addition to understanding how people currently use the library, they shared their aspirations for the library: to be welcoming, offer inspiring programs, provide a comfortable space, showcase technology for patron use and learning, be a collaborative space for learning of all ages. This helped to frame the new library mission statement, which the library board approved in January 2018. The new mission statement is, "The Weathersfield Library's mission is to provide a welcoming community gathering place with free and open access to resources and experiences that engage the imagination, inspire learning, and promote the exchange of ideas."
Hi, I'm Dorian Ciarcia, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about the goals. In fact, Hannah mentioned the five goals, and those resulted from the community input that was mentioned, but also taking a look at some of the professional best practices in the library world. And so from that, we had the five goals that were developed. Each goal has, or an objective, is measurable. And there are also, to support those goals, 150 or so specific actions, which I will not go over tonight. However, there, there's a sample of them in the strategic plan, which will be on our website in the coming days, so it's available to anyone who is interested in seeing it. So the first goal, that I believe is on there, is to satisfy the curiosity and stimulate the imagination. And we want to support our community in their endeavors to foster lifelong learning, creativity, and personal achievement. And you see there, there are five objectives. The first one has to do with providing programs and opportunities based on community need. And then we want to have our collections that inform and inspire people. We want to make sure we're always relevant when it comes to technology, very important these days, as we all know. We want to make sure the community knows who we are and who knows the programs that we offer. And then, one of my favorites, surprise and delight the community with innovative programs and resources. And some examples of those, or a couple, is to re-establish outreach to Executive Square, engage that group, create a space for our foreign language collection. And one that we've actually already done is to launch our brand-new website. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that, that was launched within the last week, and it's a wonderful space. Second goal, oops, sorry, support young learners and their families, and that's birth to age 18. We want our youth and our families to have the resources that they need to be successful in their lifelong learning objectives. That includes things like expanding and developing, enhancing their literacy skills, also offering services that support families in the community to develop their knowledge and skills and the confidence needed to support the children in those goals and that learning. And then to create welcoming and vibrant spaces to encourage learning. Some examples of that, update the children's room learning environment, so it is a welcoming and inviting place. And then, one of my other favorites, implement the program 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. The third goal, celebrate diversity, to have all Weathersfield residents have an awareness and appreciation of the different cultures within the community. Hannah had that word bubble up there, and you'll see in there, diversity was one of the key items that came through on the survey. We want to provide the community members the opportunity to learn about their own ethnic heritage and their background. Want to give them the opportunity to learn more about the world and political perspectives, their own as well as others in the community. And then we want to create an environment for community members to appreciate and celebrate different perspectives and cultures. Couple of examples, actions that would support those, look for ways to further support English Conversation Class, which is called Time to Talk. Another one, 2018 World Cup Soccer is coming up this year. We want to look at ways to show that in the library, so people can actually experience that firsthand in a way maybe some would not ordinarily. The fourth goal is to be an informed citizen. We want to play a fundamental role in the democratic process to promote civil engage, civic engagement, and civil engagement. The library's resources will be current, relevant, and easily accessible to everyone. We want to provide that environment for a healthy exchange of activities. And we want to increase our outreach to various civic groups. We serve many groups now, but there are always more. To that end, we want to meet with three new local groups, and then we want to make sure our spaces are inviting and, and we are reaching as many as possible, so look to review and revise our meeting room policy, so people have the opportunity to gather and share different perspectives. The last objective is to visit a comfortable place, because all of this is great, but if you don't have a comfortable and welcoming place, no one is going to want to be there. So we want to provide spaces that encourage the collaboration, and we want to also have spaces that promote reflection and thought. And lastly, as I've mentioned, provide that welcoming environment. Couple of examples of that, add track lighting for the art on the walls. You like to see what's on the walls. We have art, let's showcase it. That's a very welcoming, welcoming thing. And lastly, in the world of teenagers, they find a welcoming space, one that has multiple electrical outlets, so they can charge their various devices. So look into how to expand the electrical outlets that we do have within the library. To that end, and to future goals, we have key factors to success, and Martha Caneely is going to talk about those.
Thanks, and thanks again for having us here tonight. As an organization, as a board, and as, as Brooke leads the staff, there's going to be certain priorities that we keep in mind as we go forward. And as we look at these, we're looking at these within the context of our current budget. The first would be space reconfiguration. We've shared with you long-term plans that we have for refurbishing our space, but even within the, when we look at low-cost and no-cost options for how to address our space and make sure it's that welcoming environment, make sure we're meeting the diverse needs of our community. There is a lot that we can do. One great example I love to share with people is if you haven't visited the upper level of the library recently, Brooke, with, really, I don't think it cost anything, just in reconfiguring the way that the shelves were set up and moving furniture, went from kind of individual seating to have a community gathering space there, and it's a great place for, it's a quieter space, but it's a place where you could gather with a group, it's a very comfortable space to sit and read. There's, and we're looking at using various, going into all aspects of our library space and seeing how we can reconfigure things and make sure it's as welcoming as it can be for our community. The second would be outreach and communication. It's not enough to just say we're celebrating diversity and supporting young learners. It, we have to reach out to the community and make sure that we're drawing those people in, that we're engaging those groups. And so staff time, for example, will be used to go out and actually reach out into the community, and it'll be a focus of our board outreach as well. It's paramount that we stay in touch with those folks, but also that we keep in touch with our traditional library users and keep those open lines of communication with them. We will be establishing ambassadors to different segments of the population, looking at word-of-mouth, trusted networks to spread the news, and to allow for new partnerships to form. And we'll be looking to use both traditional and non-traditional forms of communication in order to do that, social media, and, and engaging people in whatever ways that we can in order to draw them into our library and meet their needs. Collection assessment is very important for us, it's, as we, we are constantly reviewing and updating our collection and, and bringing in new books, magazines, online databases, music, movies. But we're going to take a hard look at what circulates, what's requested, what people, what people want us to have, and that's going to, the new strategic plan will become essential in our strategy of selecting things. So for instance, as we celebrate diversity, we'll look to include multiple languages and diverse points of view in our collection. In order to make sure we're supporting patrons and being discerning citizens, we want to make sure we have up-to-date, accurate resources for them to depend on as they look at the complicated world in which we live. And then we know that a high turnover of books assures that, we want to have things that people want to check out, obviously because that's meeting the needs of the community, but also because we don't want them just hanging out on the bookshelves and getting dusty. And so we look for things to be turning over, and, and a high checkout rate will be a way that we, we monitor our success in that area. And then staff training and alignment is, is very important. It's very easy to sacrifice staff training when budgets are tight, but we believe this is really counterproductive. Training allows our staff and our community to keep up with new trends, new technologies, and new ways to accomplish tasks in a more cost-effective way, and change will happen more quickly when staff has new methods. In addition, as we look at the way that we're utilizing our staff, again, we're going to make sure that the staff, staff responsibilities is in alignment with strategic responsibilities. And so for instance, somebody might be identified to be an outreach person, and that will become part of their regular responsibilities. This is not looking to add staff, this is just looking to utilize our staff in a way that is in line with what the community has told us they're looking for and what our strategic plan is, is looking at. In terms of next steps, we're now sharing our strategic plan with our community. Tonight, we're here with you. The entire plan for you to read will be on the website starting tomorrow, our great new website, which we hope you'll check out anyway. We're also incorporating the new strategic goals into the budget narrative. And so when you see our budget, you'll see the old way that we have our old priorities, but then you're going to see the new priorities, and you'll actually see our budget requests broken out in accordance with each of the five strategic areas that you're looking at. And we're going to prioritize and begin to implement those 150 activities, and it's going to take time. That is years of work, not months of work, and that will be something that we look forward to sharing with the community over the next several months and years. And finally, we just, it's the last thing to do is just to say thank you. Thank you to our Strategic Planning Committee, it was a privilege for me, and I know we all enjoyed serving on it with, with Brooke, and especially with our library staff. They, the care in which they took in putting this together, and the hours that were on the ground for them was really something, and it was to hear them reflect their desire to make sure that they're meeting the, the needs of the, the community on a daily basis was really inspirational for us, I think, as a board. And then, many thanks to our community, for those of you who participated, we had 600 people participate in that online survey, which really was gratifying, the warm regard people have for our library, but also gave us a great sense of, of what our community is looking for, and I think is great feedback for all of us as we serve on different boards and commissions. So, thank you very much, and Brooke is happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation tonight. The library is a true gem in town, it really is, and I was happy to be able to take part in both the community focus group and the online survey, because I think it really is important that we, as citizens, have a voice and, and can chime in on what we think is important or for that. So, does anybody have any questions? Mary?
It's not so much a question, but just congratulations, this is really top-notch. This is really an excellent plan, the way it's laid out, the way that you went about pulling in that information, going to the community, getting the focus groups. I had the privilege of, of seeing this when you presented it to the board for approval, because I'm the liaison, but the, the more I see it, the more I realize what, what an impact it's going to have, because I think that, you know, I, I mean, we look at the, the library sort of as the sign or indicator of how vibrant a community is, and our, our library is already that, but to, I just can't wait to see how this evolves, because the way in which you've tied everything to the things that are really important to us is huge. So, great job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the comments of how great the library is, and the Lesser family is frequently taking things out of the library, but not as frequently bringing them back.
Food for finds is in July.
Yeah, so if there's a new wing that's promoted from the, the money that we're donating for not bringing everything back on time, but love the library, and just a comment and a question. The comment is, really like that you built the budget around the five strategic priorities, so I give you a lot of credit for that. And then the question is, if there's one thing, and not necessarily the strategic part, but what's the first thing or the most important thing for you guys in terms of priorities? If you have a one most important thing?
We're trying to prioritize the 150 actionable items. And I would say what we've initially identified in year one, launching the new website, we just accomplished that, and 1,000 books for kindergarten, and then there's some visit a comfortable place items that is low-hanging fruit that we can do. we can do within our current operating budget. So, you know, that's an example, but there's like 150 actionable items. That's over five years, and, you know, Doreen had mentioned some, but that's, yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Ralph?
Sure. Thank you. And I must concur, the Ralph family has gone plenty of times with these snowstorms. They do take canned goods too, non-perishable food items. So, we do-
Thank you, Counselor Ralph.
We do share in that as well. I, I too have been following this for a number of years, and I appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this. One thing, and it's not a question, it's more just a comment, having two kids of my own and seven and nine, they're a little too young, I believe, to have electronic devices, but they don't believe so. Kids and their teens, I know the library right now has a place for after-school where the kids congregate, kind of in, right as you first get in on the-
525 square feet.
Yes. It's kind of small for-
Little bit.
-them. Do you guys still have intentions of moving it and enlarging it and being more electronic-friendly for, for the kids? Kind of like a social cafe, a little bit more of a library feel than what a Starbucks would be?
So, we're looking to expand that space. That's part of the, the capital improvement projects that we've put forward, to have it enlarged to over 1,000 square feet. But in the interim, to add in electrical, we're, you know, that's, we've had an electrical, I'm looking at Sally, we've had an electrical study done, we're like maxed in that particular area. Can we add something in? Yes, and that would, you know, but I don't, like, there's not enough seating, because it's 50 to 75 teenagers who come in, either after-school or after the, after-school programs at the middle school that descend in.
Now, are you guys seeing, I know kids, they get on, I'm going to date myself, Facebook and Twitter, but now Snapchat and whatnot.
Instagram, yeah.
Instagram. Are they also using electronic media as a tool to learn? I mean, I know we've, the schools have gone, are going that route.
Sure.
Is there a continuum in the library?
So, we make sure that we don't purchase what the Board of Ed purchases, so they have double the resources in, in town. We, and we collaborate very closely with what they're purchasing. We have third-grade visits that come in, we have seventh-grade visits that come in where we kind of introduce them to what our plethora of electronic resources, so that they have access, even when, you know, if, if the school resources don't have it, they could receive it from us as well. Does that end?
Yeah. I mean, I-
Yeah.
As the paperback, hardcover books, they're starting, I mean, I would imagine in five years, 10 years, you know, everything's just going to be on electronics. Not everything, but, you know, predominant whiteboards in classrooms and all that. The library is going to help.
So, we purchase, for example, like the Nutmeg, people have heard of the Nutmeg award-winning books that are selected every year from early, younger readers to high school. And we buy multiple copies in print, and we buy multiple copies online, and we check and see what the school has been able to purchase through theirs, so that we're making sure we have as much available as possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Forrest?
Thank you. Tremendous plan. I guess some of the follow-ups that I was thinking of was, there was a discussion, will we be able to see the results of the survey? This looks like there was maybe a plan built on that survey, but I, I was one of the people that went down there for the 45 minutes and did it, and I know a lot of people did. So, I didn't know if the results are, might be available to us, or?
We can pull some of that. We got to make sure it's, because those, the focus groups of what you're referring to, where you're in a group of, you know, 12, 15 people inside the library as opposed to the survey?
I was, I remember going into the ground floor of the library-
Okay.
-filling out stuff on a computer and-
So, the, so, so the survey, that's data that we can share with you? That's not really a problem, the focus group, because it's a smaller-
Sure.
Yeah.
So, that was question one. I think just it would be interesting for us to-
Sure.
Get on board.
Yeah.
The second one was, is there sort of, we talked about there are 100 different items that the library wants to sort of work on, but is there sort of a list of low-hanging fruit, whether you want to develop a space in a certain way, but hey, I need $1,000 for a new seating that's, that's appropriate for the area? Or, we really could use this type of electronics, where, you know, even in our sort of, as counselors or friends of us that were doing redevelopment, that we could say, hey, you know, the library could really use $1,500 to just sort of knock this one off.
Sure.
Is there a list like that, sort of?
Yeah.
We could help you and get a bank to say, like, let's have this banking section, and maybe we'll make a little plaque, you know, this size, and just get it done.
So, I do have a list that I maintain, and we've been checking off and going through that. And I previously had like a furnishings line in my general operating budget, that I could do that every year. You approved at the end of the last fiscal year, capital, a capital reserve that we could go and we would come and ask to pull from our reserve for that kind of purpose. And so, and then we do, we're, we're so blessed that we have the Friends of the Weathersfield Library, because sometimes that's something they may want to put their, you know, Friends of the Weather, sponsored, you know, bought by Friends. And so, we do, we'll ask them for those types of items from time to time. And so, and they're, they've never said no so far. And there's a book sale this weekend for everyone. And so, we're able to, you know, they're able to fund those kind of items. Is that, yeah?
Well, so, and so I guess what I was thinking was, if there's, if you have a list of, say, hey, we want to accomplish this goal, here's how much we think it's going to cost, or this piece of this goal, to like break it up into smaller chunks. And there's a lot of people that talk to a lot of businesses and donors and so forth that may say, hey, I just found out that you are aligned with helping people out with a certain type of, you know, maybe health condition, and we want, wow, that's interesting. Yeah, we really want to give back to the community and do something. Oh, and guess what? The library's got a section that they're developing on that condition. And be like, well, let's make this a marriage, and let's make this work. Or, you want to develop an area for teens, and we're out talking to businesses, and they're like, yeah, we really want to get a teen program going, because we want to have a work shadow, job shadowing. Well, boy, there's, they're trying to do this at the library that aligns with your, with your, your goals and your missions. Wouldn't this be great to marry? And maybe they'll make a contribution to get that done.
Yeah.
And so, we'll help you check off that list, but we need the list, right?
Yeah.
So, if you've got a list like that, that's with some specifics, that we can align people's desires, I think I'd be more than happy to help you out. And the last one is, and I don't know if this was-
And that would be appreciated.
Sure. I'll try my best.
Get you a list.
No problem. But, and then the last, the last thought I had was that, is there, is there some discussion as we look through the strategic plan to do a cafe-style, and I'm sort of pulling off of Counselor Ralph, but we have had conversations, I remember we had the, like the meet and greet where we were sort of talking, chatting about a lot of stuff. Is there ideas to sort of like get a cafe-style thing and, you know, almost get that little, like that little buzz, maybe even, you know, sell some coffee and so forth, but it gets that sort of area?
Yeah. That's, and that's part of that plan. That's contingent right now on my plumbing. Yeah. But no, that is part of the capital improvement project, where we're purposing the three spaces, in that we'd have that in the front area, the front room of the library. So, that is something. And we do permit people to eat, right now in the library, we actually do sell coffee right now. But it's only out of a, a caring machine.
Yeah.
But, yeah. So, yeah. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a resolution tonight of the Town of Weathersfield supporting participation in the Sustainable Connecticut Municipal Certification Program. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to speak on that one hearing item? Come on up. Public comments are limited to five minutes.
Good evening, I'm Kelly De La Cruz, I live at 179 Middletown Avenue. Based on my support of other environmental issues in town, I am also going to support enrolling in the Sustainable CT Program. This is a completely free program, and it could potentially lead to receiving grants, which is free money. And of course, we would love to have free money here in town to support additional changes here in town that would be supportive of the environment. So, free, if it's for free, it's for me, is my saying, and this is something that just makes a lot of sense. And that's all I really have to say about this. So, I really hope that we definitely sign on to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Sir, come on up.
Good evening, Kevin Sullivan from 79 Wright Road. I would also like to express my support for engaging in the Sustainable CT Program. I think it's a really good way to pursue environmental conservation interests, which is one thing, but I, I think it also does larger, fits larger pieces together to help build the community more generally. The town, I understand, has done some of the things already that would count toward qualification. I'm working, some of you may recognize me as being part of Bike Walk Weathersfield. The town has recently decided to form an ad hoc committee to develop a biking and pedestrian master plan. That action will count toward the Sustainable CT qualification. I also have a personal interest in the Sustainable CT agenda in general, so if there's any kind of ad hoc committee or something like that that is formed, I'd be interested in participating, willing to volunteer, I'm sure there are others as well. Could be, as Kelly pointed out, could be a net gain with income as far as grant money. Long-term, I think there's savings for the town anyway with, with these sorts of things. So, I don't think it's a big ask, especially at this point, so I'd strongly encourage you to, to vote for participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Mr. Young?
Good evening, Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. I read, I read the information on, on the website regarding this Sustainable Connecticut, and I really have reservations about it. I sort of equate it to this organization called NESDEC, the New England School Development Council. It seems like this council, this NESDEC council had, had a lot to do with forcing the issue of renovating a high school that didn't need to be renovated. And I, as I was reading through this, I could see programs that they would be supporting, whether, and, and, and the town would say, oh, but we have support from the Sustainable Connecticut Group. Oh, it's just another, another farce that we have in this state of, of, of the Ponzi schemes that has built up to where we are today. I, I really, I really don't think it's anything we should get involved in. I really believe we should be more involved in our own everyday life and costs of running our town. I think we need to find better ways of spending our money and, and staying away from these groups that will impose their ideas to end up costing us a lot of money. Thank you. Please vote no on it.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Come on up, Martha.
Martha Caneely, 12 Fairmont Street. I just want to add my comments in support of joining Sustainable CT. This is an effort that a number of communities across the state have joined. As Kelly mentioned, it definitely is something that allows an entree into grant funding and will be helpful with initiatives that we're having, will provide great guidance. It's actually, I think, leaning towards that regional approach that we can all get behind, and so, I just would strongly support it and hope that the council does so too.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will declare the hearing closed. We'll move into public comments, general comments. Members of the public have five minutes to speak on any topic. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Mr. Young?
Good evening again, Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. At the last meeting, at the last number of meetings, Mayor, I've asked you regarding this lease with the Town of Weathersfield and the Weathersfield Historic Society for the Standish House. There's a clause in there under terms, and it says landlord shall have the right at the 10th lease year and each 10th year thereafter with the tenant involved in discussion, and upon approval of the town council, to revise monetary terms and conditions set forth, so forth and so on. I've asked you more than once, have you negotiated with these people to bring that $100 rent that we pay, that they pay us? And bring it up to some kind of a standard to equate to the $43,000 or $42,000 that Lucky Lou pays them? Have you done that, ma'am?
This is your five minutes to talk, but we-
Yes, okay, now, there's also the other lease, has a very similar, or maybe the exact kind of wording. And that's the same one for the Weathersfield, the Town of Weathersfield and the Weathersfield Historic Society and the Keene Center. You had the same statement in, in the lease, to come back and negotiate a new lease dollar amount per year. And now that they've, they do have leases in there, and I did ask the manager for copies of the lease, he hasn't responded except for he doesn't have it, and he told me to go get it myself, which I'm not the landlord, he represents the landlord. Also, in this lease, ma'am, and it doesn't allow, or doesn't require the Weathersfield Historic Society to provide any leases that they sublease that property to. That means the Weathersfield Chamber of Commerce, who is leasing from them, that lease doesn't have to come to the Town of Weathersfield, because the great people who wrote this lease, our town attorneys, didn't include it, didn't include it at all. And of course, this lease was, was approved by the Town, the Town Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously, as well as the town council. And Mr. Forrest, of course, was on that town council at that time. I mean, he's a lawyer. You would have thought he would have been looking out for the best interests of the citizens that he claimed he was representing. But obviously, a, a very important thing is missing after I got hold of the lease and we looked, I looked it over. And it's a shame. It's a very big shame. And here we are, looking for money, and we don't have it. We don't even have the ability now, since you haven't, Mayor. You've been on this council for several years. You and the prior mayor should have been negotiating with them to bring that, those, those rentals that they have up and put the money in our pocket. But obviously, you failed to do that. I also, over the last few days, been reading paper, reading in the paper regarding the state agrees to pay the cities, that's the Hartford, Hartford City, $550 million of debt over the next 20 years. I was outraged when I read that. I, I thought it was only two years, but obviously, they slipped something through on us. And it, and not only that, there's a number of mayors, mayor, in the state of Connecticut that are also outraged. And I believe Tony Harp from New Haven was screaming, even the most incredible, Mr. Joe Gammon was screaming. And I was looking for your name in here, but I didn't see it. Maybe we'll see it next week. I think the people of Weathersfield should be represented and be screaming, because as they take the state money, we don't get the state money. It just works that way. And we end up being the losers, and we sit back, and we haven't said a word. We haven't screamed. We haven't screamed. But mayors right across the state have been, they're quoted in the newspapers now regarding this issue. And we should have some kind of representation here in our town. You know, Luke Bronin came here back several years ago looking for support for his community.
Okay, your time is up, so please-
Yes, I'll wrap it up, ma'am. I'll wrap it up. And he got no support. Yet, he still ended up with the big, the big bundle of cash. And we should be all screaming because as he gets the bundle of cash, we end up losing. But maybe that's because of our government. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Martha?
Sorry, I'm really taking advantage. Martha Canelli, twelve Fairmont Street. I'm not able to be here for the town, the next meeting when we'll be discussing the budget. So, I just really wanted to say a quick word in support of the library budget. I am proud to be supporting the library's budget. I think as you, you know, as discussed earlier, and we are so appreciative of the great support that we always have from the town council and from our community. Brooke is, has been such a fiscally responsible manager. I think when you take a good look at the budget, as you start to take a look at it, you're going to be able to see that she really has gotten the most out of every bit of funding that you have been gracious enough to provide for us and that the community supports for the library. We've actually had reductions in almost every line item over the course of several years. It's obvious, and I think we're all seeing this in the different departments, it's the health insurance that's driving the slight increase that we're looking at. But we have really dug deep on every item to make sure that we're getting the most value. And, you know, going into collection, going into our specialized agency supplies, going into post, every little bit that we can. And, you know, we, we do that, but we also are very dedicated to providing that service that the community wants. There is no, there's no department in Weathersfield that has hours longer than the library, except for the police and the fire department. And in fact, we're really open 24 hours because you can always access our library services online from your home. I actually keep a library app on my phone right here. It's called Hoopla. If you haven't gotten in on Hoopla yet, Mr. Rell, I think you want to check it out. It is a great way to download books, music, movies. They have multiple languages. You can get both Spanish and English editions of some books. And it's, it's very current. It's really good. There's, we have other resources like Freegal, which will provide online music. And my husband's favorite, I always say, is Consumer Reports, which you can access from home. So, we are really open 24 hours a day, and we have people utilizing it. We have wifi that goes until, Brooke, you'll correct me, through two in the morning, 12. And people will sit outside the library even in the evening and hook into our wifi. Because it's a sort, it's, you know, sometimes it's hard to believe it's something that not everybody has access to. And it's, and we're happy to provide that for, for people in our community. And so, again, I just thank you in advance for your support, and thank you for the support you have given us, and thank the community for the great support that you give to the library.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. David Kurk, one forty-nine Broad Street. Just like to say, I was listening to the library, what they were saying in their, in their little presentation. And they mentioned encourage civic engagement. I thought, wow. I think maybe they should have a sign on Mondays, every other Mondays, "Come here because we could use more civic engagement at town hall." We have the regular speakers, and, and they're okay. I'm being nice there. But, but, but I did see some civic engagement at the last Board of Ed, where two high school girls came up to speak, and one was the mayor's daughter, regarding something going on in the high school. I spoke afterwards, put a little rain on their parade by disagreeing with them. But, but, you know, that's, we, you know, that's what we do. We give our opinions and our honesty. And, and as far as the budget, I don't have anything to say about it now. I guess I didn't, I didn't hear it yet, and I didn't read it either. But I support the library, you know. I remember when the library was gonna, we were hoping it would move many years ago to the motor vehicle. When we think motor vehicle is gonna move out, we're gonna take over that. We'll put the town council, we'll put the library in there. And some of the librarians were all excited about it. But then we found out that it would cost a fortune to clean it up because there was all the best stuff in there, and plus the state wasn't gonna move out anyway. But that would have been exciting, you know. But thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to council reports. Council members? Counselor Rell?
Well, I guess it would be a council report. It's just advisory. As in Historical Society Liaison, The Taste of Weathersfield is coming up this Saturday, the seventh. I believe in advance, you can purchase tickets for $30. At the door, it's $35. The money goes to a number of worthy causes that the Historical Society puts on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Spinella?
We had another meeting of the Memorial Day Parade Committee. The parade is gonna be on May 26th. The town, well, the theme, I think, is town employees who have served in the military. We haven't come up with a speaker yet. I know Mike's working on that. But we encourage everybody to come out May 26th.
Thank you. Any other reports? Counselor Rell, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to mention, we had a shared services meeting, and we continue to work at the board to look at different efficiencies. At this time, we are not going ahead with the combination of the maintenance under the town side because it wasn't going to be an efficiency in saving us money at this time. But we continue to look for ways to work together, share services, and potentially save money.
Thank you. Any other council reports? Moving into council comments. Deputy Mayor?
I just want to report, last Tuesday, after the third try, because of the snow, we finally had the ribbon cutting down at the All True Value Building where, I know I'm gonna myrtleize the name. Kelly Von Raymond opened up. It's an oriental restaurant that does super job. I went in afterwards. I got a tour of the place. They even have their own noodle machine. They make their own noodles from scratch. So, everything will be fresh over there. Being an Italian who loves homemade pasta, this really adds to it. So, you know, anybody that's looking for, their soups were delicious. I had some. So, I highly recommend you go support this new business in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council comments? Okay. Bobby Granato and I met with fourteen residents and business owners at Heirloom Market on Saturday, March 24th, for our coffee with the mayor and chair. It's a great opportunity for residents who don't want to come and speak at a council meeting, but you do want to speak to one of us. We're there for that purpose. Our next coffee will be at Aroma Bistro on April 21st, 9:30 to 11:00. And I encourage anybody to come out and speak to us on any issue that they have. I too have written down The Taste of Weathersfield, Saturday, April 7th, at 7:00 p.m., Keene Cultural Center. Purchase tickets online or at the door. There's a yard cleanup day in Weathersfield, Saturday, April 21st. Residents can bring up to a half cubic yard of brush to the transfer station at no cost. And the Weathersfield Public Library's book sale is this weekend. And I don't have the hours. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
Thursday night, Saturday, and Sunday.
Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday. Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll move into the town manager's report. And the town manager has an overview of the 2018-2019 proposed budget.
Sustainable energy.
There we go. Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council and members of the public. This is a brief overview of the 2018-19 budget. There is a voluminous full edition online that you are, you can read. It breaks down each department, very similar to what the library did, into five or six major components and cost factors for each department. It's very detailed. We've got a lot of statistics in it about building permits, law enforcement activity, fire department activity, those kind of things. So, if you have several hours with nothing to do, I encourage you to read through the entire budget. It is, it is very good information source for the town, not just for its budget. So, we're gonna start tonight on the proposed budget for next year. There'll be a more in-depth presentation at the public hearing, but I'll give you the highlights. Okay, we're gonna start with the current year budget and its evolution to its current state. This is kind of a table on where we've been with the current year budget. As you know, by charter, we have to adopt by May 15th of each year. And we did so last year, knowing that the state didn't have a budget and knowing that whatever we adopted would probably come back around and be amended. So, in October, the state adopted a new budget, or stopped at their state budget, and we had to adjust the town's budget formally to account for the municipal aid, the change in the motor vehicle tax rate, and some significant municipal aid reductions. And you can see right there, you know, it's kind of, ouch, that hurts. And then after, we adopted the budget and thought we were in the clear. The state came back, actually, the governor came back again and said, "Well, the legislature gave me the authority to reduce the budget by 30 to 50 million dollars." And he decided to do that by eliminating even more state aid. So, we, after another $922,000 cut, the town did what was called a deficit mitigation plan, which is the last column. We didn't formally amend the budget, but both the board and the town recognized certain changes to their spending and revenue plans to account for the reduction. And that's kind of where we ended up for the fiscal year, and that's kind of our target for the fiscal year overall. For the town budget for next year, our starting point wasn't the end result of the deficit mitigation plan. But when we talk about budget over budget, we're talking about what we had formally adopted in November of 2017. That's what we consider the current year budget. Okay. So, if we look at that, 2017 over 20, 2018 over 2019, you can see overall, we're going up 2.8 million dollars. And you can see kind of the deltas between the two. We're going up to 104. And if you can see the chart below, the spending increase townwide is 2.85% over the November 17 budget. The Board of Ed, when they did their budget, they looked at the deficit mitigation plan. They gave you a number of 1.9 million increase. That was projected off the deficit mitigation plan. When we ran the percentages, we used the November 17 budget. So, their number is slightly less of an increase, 1.7 million. So, those are the differences there. The mill rate, ouch. And that's what you get when you lose a couple, $3 million worth of state aid. And so, even as we work this budget for next year, two items to keep in mind. The state has not solved its current year $260 million deficit. The governor's plan is to further reduce municipal aid by 30 to 50 million dollars. So, even though we are now three months away from ending our fiscal year, or four months away from ending our fiscal year, we are not totally guaranteed on the revenue we're anticipating for municipal aid to date. Also, we're using the governor's budget numbers for municipal aid for next year. Whether or not those survive the legislative process, we don't know. I guess appropriations is supposed to pass something out by the end of Thursday. And we maybe have a better idea of the legislature's thought process. So, as we work our budget through until May 15th, those are two things to keep in mind, that nothing is set in stone when it comes to municipal aid. Looking at municipal aid, you can see the deltas between the two years. You know, some big numbers here. The municipal stabilization grant, which is an evolution of reimbursement we were supposed to get for lowering the motor vehicle tax, is evaporated for next year. That's gone. If you look at the ECS grant, you're showing 8.8 million in the current year. Actually, that's before holdback. The real number after holdbacks is about 800, 8 million. So, there's an $800,000 difference there. So, that number's actually lower for next year. This is just what's in the adopt, lower for this year. That's just what's in the adopted budget. So, these numbers are subject to change for next year. You can see Mohegan Grant, the Pequod Grant's down. Town aid, LOSIP, that goes into our road fund, that's down quite a bit. Overall, municipal aid is where the money is for the state. Cost drivers, of course. People, you know, people do what we do. So, that's gonna be a big deal. So, we're using current approved contracts. We have one union that's in arbitration, so their numbers are guestimates at this point for non-department, for non-union employees, part-timers. And those took a hard zero this year. We're anticipating 2% for next year. Employee retiree health benefits are going up quite a bit. That includes the commitment to the incremental growth and the contribution to the OPEB fund. The retiree health benefits are going up $216,000. Health insurance, as you heard earlier this evening, that's at a 6% increase for right now. We're hoping that goes down, but our claim volume this year has been heavy, heavier than in prior years. Metropolitan District, $345,000 increase for next year. That's just a huge, huge piece, bite of the apple for us. The Health District's going up a little bit. As I said, the LOSIP money that goes into roads is being reduced by 122. Now, we've made that up with local tax dollars to keep state at the 1.5 million dollar road paving budget. But again, that's local money replacing state aid. And then we have increased mandates from the state of Connecticut. I want to bring attention to two that are outlined in my message. One is the, what's called the elderly circuit breaker, which is a property tax credit for elderly and disabled homeowners of certain income eligibility. The state used to pay that program, which ran over $200,000 a year. They have now shifted that to the towns and required us to pick up the program and pay that bill. The second one is very similar, but it's for elderly and disabled renters under certain income limits. It's called renters rebate. The state used to pay for that program too, and they are now requiring the towns to pick up half of that. That's $135,000 cost to us. As we talk about ECS, this is the ECS grant as a percent of the education budget. You can see that state's commitment to education in Weathersfield's down. Actually, if you look at this number, that's what's in the budget. But in reality, after holdbacks, it's probably down here somewhere for the current year. And let me just move over here because you can't see.
You have a pretty good guess.
Yeah, you gotta guess. It's lower. You know, it's not up here. It's down here. So, that's really the challenge of our budget. It's really not, I mean, there's a, there's a spending issue, you know, on some elements. I'm sure people will have that opinion. But the municipal aid and the revenue from municipal aid is- I'm sure people will have that opinion. But the municipal aid and the revenue from municipal aid is is driving a lot of that grant. Now, as a corollary, this is, we ran a number. What percent of the increase in the town side spending is the MDC increase? And you can see that the MDC increase makes up twenty-four percent of the town's spending increase. I think, I know there's a desire to have conversations earlier this year, and we fully intend to have those conversations with the MDC earlier this year. To what effect, I don't know, but we'll do it. We talk about fund balance. We talk about fund balance all the time. The proposed fund balance at the end of fiscal nineteen is proposed to be ten point six percent. This is a chart of the fund balance over the past ten years. As you can see, we kinda boosted it up when we started getting into the high school project to maintain positive bond ratings, and now we're kinda sustaining somewhere around ten and a half percent, or that's kinda the goal. CIP, again, we're staying at one point five million for roads, and this is kinda the breakout of how else we're spending nine hundred thousand dollars of capital improvement funds. Not a lot of money there, but a lot to be spent on. Drainage, fire safety improvements, sidewalks, town buildings. This includes re-roofing the Solomon Wells House, schools, is some additional security enhancements, recreation parks, of course, and pavement maintenance is for crack ceiling in town parking lots. Nine hundred thousand dollars. That's all we got.
Is any of those, those dams we talked about?
No. Dams are big bucks. Those are gonna be five hundred thousand, two million dollar hits. We're gonna have to think about how we get there on those projects. The proposed public hearing is two weeks from this evening, seven PM, in this room. The town budget's online, weathersfieldct.gov. It's on the front page. Comments can be sent to jeffbridges@weathersfieldct.gov, or the town clerk, or any one of you. Your emails are published. But come out in the next couple of weeks. It'll be a kind of a more in-depth presentation, but that's kinda the the five-minute show there. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any this evening. Mike O'Neil, our fabulous finance director and his staff, along with all the department heads, I want to thank very much again. I think all our department heads to a person, all our employees to a person, understand the the resource restrictive environment we're in, and we don't really get, you know, requests that they know don't have a real fighting chance. So I appreciate everybody on the town staff looking at hard numbers and looking at their budgets and being realistic, and I appreciate the town staff, finance department, Cheryl Pierce in my office, for doing a great job getting this budget together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And you and Mike and your teams have done a great job bringing in a budget with all of the difficulties that you showed us at two point eight five overall. So it'll be a long, a long month of budget deliberation, but you've definitely brought in a budget that's at a good starting point for us to begin those deliberations, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are there any council members that have some general questions for tonight? Counselor Rell?
Two questions. One, back to the, you don't have to bring it up, but that slide about the increases, salaries, in particular, the health insurance costs, six point five percent increase. Where do we see, what's the increase? What's driving that?
Claim volume. We're self-insured, so the first hundred and fifty thousand dollars of any claim, the town pays direct. So we are seeing, and we've had a couple of cases in town where these claims for individuals have gone over five hundred thousand to a million dollars over the past eighteen months. So we're seeing higher claim volume than we have in the past. Costs are up medical-wise. Costs go up medical-wise three, four, five percent a year, so that's kinda driving that number. Now, we hope as usually, by the time we get around to May, that number drops a little bit, but it is, it's, the claim numbers are up there. We usually get a bill every day from Anthem for about seventy thousand dollars a day. In February, we have it at two hundred and fifty thousand dollar a day, and we had a three hundred thousand dollar day back-to-back. So that's driving those numbers.
The second question, and I know we're gonna be talking about it, MDC. I remember when, and I forget what it, oh, it was the ad valorem tax, that debate. Weathersfield, we rank up there pretty high. We're not as high as Hartford, West Hartford. We're somewhere in the middle of the region of towns that, you know, utilize MDC. Are the other towns facing a twenty-four percent, or well, whatever the increase would be, but ours is twenty-four percent of the increase? Are they facing
Yes.
Huge numbers as well?
It's spread evenly across, well, it's not spread evenly. Basically, the ad valorem is a, is a product of a kind of a calculation that looks at your tax levy and your taxable property. So if you, if your tax levy's down and your collection rate's down, so is your MDC assessment. If your tax rate's up and your collection rate's up, your assessment goes up because you're collecting more taxes.
Right.
Right? So that's kinda the catch twenty-two of that whole thing. So.
But Jeff, to be clear, our, our increase is about nine percent. The twenty-four percent represents how much that increase represents the overall increase in our budget, but we're actually up nine percent.
That's, that's correct. The MDC increase is nine percent. What that chart showed is, of our, of the towns, just the town side, not the Board of Ed side, of that two point seven five percent increase on the town side, of that amount, MDC makes up twenty-four percent, almost a quarter of our total increase on the town side. That's what that chart showed. Wasn't up that they were up twenty-four percent.
No, and I knew it. I just couldn't remember.
I'm sure they'll get there, but you know.
I just couldn't remember the nine point seven two or whatever that number was.
But every, all the towns, you go, we go to these meetings and all of them have the same argument. Now, there's a working group and a consultant that's working on a study to move the, the MDC away from a sewer ad valorem, 'cause really, the ad valorem just covers sewer service. Moving away from that to a direct bill sewer charge. And there's pros and cons to that on both sides, but there's a working group looking at that study. Every twenty years, it comes up, and every twenty years, there's another study to look at it. But we've, we've engaged, 'cause the towns are kinda running this show with the MDC, engaged a consultant to look at what's the net effect of moving away from the ad valorem and just being part of the water bill. So that will be over the next few months. We'll have those conversations.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, thanks. I, I just had a question on the elderly circuit breaker. I was trying to understand in, I understand that they're gonna cut it, but then we have a program that's similar, but that doesn't, that doesn't help any. With us having to, or does it, or will that work with our liability to have to pay for that?
No, there's no connection between the two, although they both do the same thing. Historically, ours has been stacked on top
Okay.
of the states, and now you get both.
So we have to do what the state did, and then we continue with the program that we already have. Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Counselor Hurley?
Back to the MDC. Is the consultant independent, or is it somebody that the MDC uses all the time?
There was a RFP put out by, in conjunction with the towns serving as the, kinda the RFP panel. The towns reviewed the RFPs and made a recommendation to the MDC on who to pick, so the, the towns are in the middle of that.
And you were in the middle of that too?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Jeff, skim through the book and everything so far, you know, interesting reading, to say the least. But on the Excel spreadsheet you gave us, because we're past April first, would it be possible to add one more column to this and give us the nine-month actual year-to-date for this fiscal year as well?
As we go into the workshop meetings, we'll provide more information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff. Excellent job putting the book together. I guess my three questions revolve around a couple of things. First is, are there any town-side, I don't know if improvements is the right word, but anything that you put into this budget that you, that are in addition to maybe what we've been doing in, over the last twelve months, some type of initiative that you wanted to take, or you were able to make, move something around, say, "No, we'd like to head in this direction." Any sort of changes? Or is it really just sort of exactly like it was last year?
It's, it's what I would call a current services budget. And there's no new people in it on the town side.
And then for, when we talk about the, the potential increase of two point eight five percent, for each, do you have any idea, and I think it might be a million dollars, but do you have any idea, for each percentage that we increase the revenue, what is that worth? Is that a million dollars for each percentage point?
Well, the budget's roughly a hundred and four million dollars, so every million dollars represents slightly less than one percent.
Okay.
Okay. Now, on a revenue side, each mill represents roughly almost over two point one million dollars, between two point one and two point two million dollars. So each mill is between two point one and two point two million dollars for one mill.
When is the next revaluation?
This fall.
So that will obviously be, could be significantly adjusted, depending on.
For next year's budget, you'd be looking at a new grant list
Right.
that's based upon the rebal. Yep.
And the fund balance guidance, you know, ten point five, ten point six, we're in the tens. Is there, is there guidance as, as it relates to certainly like our bond rating and sort of looking to the future about, you know, maybe some schools, school projects and stuff? What is that guidance?
Prior to two thousand eight, two thousand nine, before the meltdown, ten percent, eleven percent was looked at as pretty positive. Now, we hear from the rating agencies every time we have a call, fifteen. Everybody wants fifteen. Fifteen is kinda the benchmark now for what the rating agencies are looking for as adequate, sufficient. That's kinda the number.
Ten to eleven?
No, fifteen.
Is fifteen X, like, so what is our bond rating right now? I couldn't remember.
Double A plus.
Double A plus.
One step below the highest rating.
Okay. So if we were to achieve the fifteen percent, would we, would it be, would that be the type of situation where our bond rating might be the triple A, I guess?
I don't know if that alone would get us there. There's so many factors in bond rating. I think that would help sustain the double A plus, because we right now have a negative outlook because of the regional financial insecurities. But it would definitely help us stay at double A plus.
And what do, what are they, what would the bond ratings be looking at to, I guess it's several things, but is there another town we can look to that has a bond rating that is better than ours?
West Hartford.
And would they have a fifteen percent?
They actually have a lower, a lower fund balance, but their grant list tends to grow faster. So when you look at a bond rating, it's a combination of factors and how those individual factors come together for your community. So in Weathersfield's case, we have a double A plus rating, and the things that work positively for us are the fund balance of ten percent, and it's stable. We're not throwing a lot of money at it, at the budget on fund balance to buy down the taxes. So we've maintained a stable fund balance, and we're committed to it.
Yep.
We pay a hundred percent of our ARC on the pension every year. We have a plan to address our long-term retiree health obligation, and we've stuck to that plan. We have a history of conservative budgeting. Our budget performance always is in the positive. Maybe we end the year with a ten, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars here and there, but we're not blowing the budget every year. We have a decent grant list, which is stable if not growing. We don't have a continuation of grant lists that are going down. So you look at those combination of factors. We have stable revenues generally on the town side apart from municipal aid. So those are positives in our respect. Now, if you're a town that has a substantially increasing grant list, but you're, you're kinda lower on your fund balance, you know, those, those issues kinda play against one another. It just depends on the mix and the town's environment that they're in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Rell?
Just to follow up on that, if I'm not mistaken, Governor Malloy's administration last year, OPM Secretary Ben Barnes had sent a letter to all the municipalities questioning their fund balance.
Yes.
If you achieved a fund balance of over fifteen percent, it was kinda looked at, you're a little too healthy, and the rates or the municipal funding that would come from the state to the municipalities was cut if they looked at your fund balance at a certain threshold, and I forget what it was, fourteen nine nine or something like that they had. So would it be advantageous of us to keep a fund balance of less than fifteen, but greater than ten? Somewhere in between, you know, and maybe not too, too high of twelve five or something like that, or is ten five, ten six, fine, healthy enough?
I think what, I mean, I would love to be at fifteen, but I think the number of dollars to get you to fifteen would absorb other critical needs in the budget. I think we got to ten five and eleven percent in a couple of years on purpose, okay? So if we can hold the ten five and maybe fluctuate between ten five and eleven here and there, I think that's positive. I don't think we're gonna, if we made a conscious effort to get to fifteen, I think you're gonna suck resources from other needs that you, you may prioritize above that. I think stability is key. I think if we start throwing eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars a year of fund balance into the budget, and we start dropping, that's gonna impact the bond rating. I think if we move away from our commitment to our long-term legacy obligations, pension and OPEB, that's gonna affect the bond rating. I think I would recommend you try to stay where you're at with the, with the fund balance. Again, remember, it's a percent of general fund spend. So every year, if you go up a little bit on your general fund, you gotta tweak that fund balance a little bit to stay at that same percentage. I don't think you can get to fifteen without really sacrificing something else. And I think if we can show stability to the bond rating agencies and showing our commitment to roads, one point five million, capital improvements, the OPEB and liability costs and so forth and so on, and each year getting a little tick on the grant list, I think they look at overall management of the municipality, and, and that's positive, positive. We, you know, I don't know what the governor's gonna believe, but, you know, or OPM, but there'll be a new one next year, and we'll see what their thoughts are on the matter.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. The town clerk, do you have anything to add tonight?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Our next item of business is an appointment to boards and commissions. Do I have a motion? Counselor Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to add to the zoning board of appeals to fill a vacancy. Kevin Tedesco of thirty-four Ireland Street for a turn period of four to eighteen to six thirty twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
I believe it's an alternate.
It's an alternate appointment? Okay, thank you, Dolores. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions? Motion passes. Next, we have a resolution for action. Do I have a motion?
Yeah. Motion to adopt a resolution supporting participation by the town of Weathersfield in the Sustainable Connecticut Municipal Certification Program.
Second.
Okay, town manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As it says in the packet, this was kind of an evolution out of a Connecticut Conference of Municipalities kinda thought process, how to bring together eight or nine descriptive elements to a community and outline what action steps would be part of best management practices in those eight or nine steps. And that's really what the Sustainable CT program is. It outlines best management practices as it relates to these nine different categories, such as, you know, thrive-
It outlines best management practices as it relates to these nine different categories such as, you know, thriving local economies, well-studied land and natural resources, vibrant and creative cultural ecosystems, clean and diverse transportation systems, efficient physical infrastructure operations, strategic and inclusive public services, healthy, efficient, diverse housing, inclusive and equitable community impacts and innovation action. And I'm sure Fabio's library is part of one of these criteria somewhere. But it's kind of a best management practice. It's a way to engage our other boards and commissions as they relate to some things in the community and kind of not keep score, but kind of give, it's almost like a not a strategic plan, but it's kind of set some goals, some things to work towards and some recognition to be made when some of these things are accomplished. So overall, it doesn't cost us anything. I think it may help focus some of our efforts in some of these categories and identify things that we should be doing that we may not.
Thank you. Are there any questions, any comments, Counselor Rell?
I think I read somewhere 13 municipalities are involved in it. Is it 13 regional Hartford region or 13 across the entire state?
At the time Peter wrote the memo, there were 13. There's now over 30 that have registered to be in the program. And that and tomorrow we would register to be in it and start the process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Great, I think it's a great initiative, no cost to the town and allows us to apply for grants or partnerships and it's showing what we've already do in some instances. Thank you. So seeing no more questions, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, anybody abstaining, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into other business, acceptance of an after-school program grant, do I have a motion?
Motion authorize the town manager to apply for and accept a Keen Foundation grant to support the intramural and tutoring program at the Silas Dean Middle School for $11,300 for the 2018-19 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, town manager?
I'm gonna ask Kathy Bagley, Director of Parks, Recreation, Social and Youth Services and all other duties as assigned, to give us give us the 911 on this one, the 411, sorry.
Good evening, Kathy. Thank you.
Good correction there, Jeff.
Good evening. This grant will be the third year that we're applying for an after-school grant for the Silas Dean Middle School to do our intramurals that would be four days a week and also our after-school tutoring program. And this is a grant that the Keen Foundation has seen fit to give it to us for the past two years. So this is us applying for it for the third year. It's been very popular with the students. The intramurals have done very well. We do a fall, winter and spring session. And the after-school tutoring, this year it expanded. In the first year, we did it just, we did it after intramurals. And the second year, we did a pilot program where we also did it before intramurals. So that there were some students that didn't take part in the intramurals, but took part in the tutoring. So this has been very popular. We've worked with the school administration at the middle school. They're very supportive of this. Tutoring has been very helpful for the after-school program and it's been a success all around.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Forrest?
You know, there's there are some decisions up here that are tough. This is not one of them. That's fantastic. It's for the good of all the things that are positive about this community, so fully supported. And I hope that we can continue this these programs and continue to expand on some of the groundwork that we've already built.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add to Counselor Forrest, just a big thank you to the continuous generosity of the Keen Foundation for funding this and all the other programs that they fund. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions, motion passes? Thank you. Next, we have a the approval of a sub recipient agreement. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Weathersfield and the Weathersfield Housing Authority for the Small Cities Program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Town manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. At the last meeting, you approved a series of resolutions related to the town's application to the state of Connecticut for a small cities grant to renovate some housing with the Weathersfield Housing Authority. What this agreement does this evening, it determines the relationship between the town of Weathersfield and the housing authority as it relates to those funds and basically puts the onus of grant compliance on the housing authority and any costs on the housing authority.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion passes. Next, we have a purchase for a fleet vehicles bid. Do I have a motion, Counselor Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to purchase and dispose of the vehicles requested using $30,000 from the CNEF Reserve Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd ask that Sally Katz talk about these vehicles. I will say that the $30,000, and I think I wrote it up in here. We at the end of fiscal '17, we put aside 30,000 with the expectation to buy one car to replace the Cavalier. Now with that, all three have passed beyond.
Sally Katz, Director of Physical Services. What you have before you, years ago, we purchased used a number of Cavaliers. They have, over the years, had to go out of service. This year, we actually had to take two of them out of service. These are cars that have a model year of 2002, which it's crazy, but it's 16 years. And they have literally rotted out. We have been the stewards of them that have made them last this long, but we're not miracle workers and we did have to take them off off the road. We looked at a number of different options. We tried to find additional natural gas vehicles. We were unable to. We were we looked at state bids for a number of different brands of cars and they all came out at more expensive. I looked at six or seven different used car vehicles dealers. I was finally able to work with one Ford dealer. The majority of our fleet are Ford vehicles. So it is better for us, if possible, to be able to to purchase Ford vehicles, although we I did look at a number of different brands. And so after a number of weeks of research and talking with different dealers, what you have in front of you is what we found. These vehicles are vital to the job performance of the people who are in the building department, who do the historic district commission work, who do the work for the engineering department. We need to go out, we need to look at the projects that we're working on. We need to be able to have eyes on the ground and boots, eyes in the air and boots on the ground for this type of work. Same thing with the building department. These people need to be able to go out to job sites to check that work is being done properly and in accordance with our rules and regulations. These vehicles will be used, as I said, in departments that they don't sit behind a desk all the time. They have to be out in the field. We have to be able to get them from here out into the field and to be able to do it safely.
Thank you for being here tonight, Sally. When awarding this bid, how soon will these vehicles be delivered?
Tomorrow.
Okay, that was fast. Are there any other questions or comments? Counselor Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Ms. Katz. As we, I don't know, was there any consideration for electric vehicles in this particular field?
I looked at electric vehicles. They are still currently very expensive and far surpassed what we had available as a working budget for this project. We also, right now in town, do not have an electric charging station. And so at this point, it doesn't make fiscal sense to to do it because of the fact that the vehicles are still the price point for them are still 35, 40,000 dollars, which puts it right now in a out of our budget.
What does the future just generally look like as far as replacement of vehicles? Are we looking at like one in the, you know, for the next five years, two, or after this after this transaction gets made? Oh, yeah, sorry, Mayor.
No, that's fine. If I may. The a majority of the fleet we've purchased for this type of operation were natural gas vehicles. So we have about a half dozen natural gas vehicles, three Hondas, a couple of Transits and a van that take natural gas. So probably as we evolve, we're gonna have to look at an EV station. And whether or not it replaces the natural gas station is something we're gonna have to look at and see what how we're gonna plan the future of this fleet. But once we buy these two, we'll probably have to take an old PD car to make up the other one. Or we're gonna have to look at when do the the lifespan of these natural gas vehicles kind of abate and then plan for an EV station and somehow fund that. Then what would made the Cavaliers somewhat unique is they were dual fuel. They took natural gas or unleaded. So it was kind of a neat thing to have them.
So as you move forward, just and you're looking at the fleet and how to, you know, how to look at your our fleet and how it's replaced. But it seems like the electric cars are running about 30 to 40 percent of the fuel costs, which is a huge reduction just as a percentage. And then also the maintenance is looking to be tremendously less. So it might be something for the future. I understand it's not gonna change our vote here today, but since we're talking about fleet vehicles and replacing them, it seems to be a good start of that particular conversation. And at least for the time I'm here and we move forward, I'll be looking forward to that, whatever planning that you kind of come up with.
Long term, that's where we need to go.
Right, it's absolutely where we need to go. It's just that at this point with this critical situation, even trying to look at it, we did. We looked at electric vehicles, natural gas vehicles, hybrid vehicles, everything that we could. And these are pretty fuel efficient in city driving. And that's the other thing that we predominantly use these cars for. So we tried to find something that had a better city miles per gallon than some of the other vehicles. These are smaller cars. These are not large SUVs. And so we are cognizant of that also.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counselor Spinella?
This may be a question for the town manager. Is there, has anybody ever looked at just giving people mileage money and letting them use their own cars?
Not recently. I think a lot of employees are reluctant to use their own cars. We've had where, you know, particularly, I think, five years ago, we had the assessors driving a town vehicle, but they were T-boned in a town car. And I think there's not a lot of desire to put their own vehicles out there.
Also, with the amount of the fuel costs and other things, the mileage comes out to where it's more cost effective in many cases for us to be able to use the vehicles.
I do know that the Health District used to use a town car, but now they're they're held in the inspectors for the Health District are using their owns and they're giving them mileage.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, we have replacement of the rooftop HVAC unit. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the quote from Countrywide Mechanical Services for the replacement of the rooftop unit at Charles Wright Elementary School for $12,500 with the $1,875 contingency funds to come from the Silas Dean Air Handler Project.
Second.
Okay, town manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Fred Bushy with the Board of Ed is here this evening to review this with you.
Thank you.
I will say, the reason we're picking the Silas Dean Air Handling Unit, there was a project that we put about 60 to 65,000 dollars in a few years ago. The real number for that project is about 250,000. So we've kept that money in place and used it for things like security enhancements and other improvements in the building, knowing full well at some point, we're gonna have to replace that air handling unit at Silas Dean for over 200,000 dollars.
Correct. This the the air handling unit that needs to be replaced is approximately 20 years old. Parts are no longer available for this unit. The connective natural gas red tag, the the heating side of it. I can no longer get the the heat exchanger that's in there. What we did the last time with this unit was to take it out, reweld it and place it back. And the same thing with the the air conditioning coil side of it. Parts are just no longer available. It's an R12 unit which is with freon, which is no longer made. We can get it. It's extremely expensive and it's just more cost effective to replace this unit. I solicited three quotes for this. Countrywide came in at 12.5. I am carrying a little bit of a higher contingency than I normally would. I normally go around between seven, eight percent, something like that. But I do not know what's gonna happen once we pull this unit off of the roof. I don't know what's there. We cannot see what's there from down below. We cannot see what's up there from from up the top. Obviously, if the if the contingency is not used, then it'll be returned back to back to Capital Improvement Fund.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this? Counselor Hurley?
A couple of questions. Do they do the work of taking apart the other one and taking it off the roof?
Yeah, a complete removal, Mr. Hurley.
And then when would this be put in, within a couple of weeks?
Well, we're gonna try to get it. I'm really striving for vacation week to get this done. The unit itself is approximately a week out in checking with with carrier. Hopefully, we can get it delivered on time to get it done during the vacation week. It's it's approximately about two days' work once you get mobilized there with a crane. Obviously, if we're gonna swing a crane over the building, it won't allow cranes swinging over the building while while the children are in the building. So it would either have to be done during the vacation week or on an after-school basis after 3 o'clock. I checked with our local officials about this and and Mr. Lattarulo and and Mr. Dignati said they would, you know, come out, have a look at it to make sure everything was safe about doing this, if we had to resort to that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments, Deputy Mayor?
Fred, do we have any other air handling units with this old type freon in them or so?
Yes, we do. At and actually at Charles Wright, Mr. Martino, there are, there's, let me see, I think, I think I believe there's four that still have that still have that that original R12, R12 and R22 freon in them. They're still working. They they still run. We can still charge them a little bit because we do have canisters of that. My if we don't have it, my vendor does have on hand. But once things start to break down and we have to evacuate the gases, not a good process to to have that even, you know, to go out into the atmosphere.
Is that the only school we have it at or are there some other schools?
Ah, that's Emerson Williams is is got some, no, R12, but R22 units. I believe there's at least four of them there that are in a similar situation.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Rell?
Thank you, Fred. Are these or is this unit more energy efficient than the ones, the other four that are out there right now?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. The sear the sear rating on the air conditioning side is upwards of almost 18, where the 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 unit now that's up there, if it's 10, we're lucky that we're getting that much out of it. And on the heating, on the heating side of it, there these these heat exchanges are squeezed down so far that they they, you know, run on a bare minimum of gas.
So we could in fact see a little bit of a savings out of them, probably. We wouldn't wouldn't see it because of, you know, other uses. But it's definitely not, you know, we're not putting money into an old flunker and.
I don't think you're really gonna see something on the on the bill, Mr. Rell, but you will. How it's gonna be noticed, this is gonna be within the the classroom space, the the spaces that it actually serves in the, you know, within the building.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
If I may. Fred, visit with us in the morning, we'll get you the PO.
I'm sorry?
Visit with us in the morning, we'll get you the PO so you can get this thing ordered.
Very good.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Next, we have the minutes of March nineteenth. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Finally, we have public comment. Members of the public may speak for five minutes on any topic. Do I have anybody from the public who would like to speak tonight? Mr. Colantonio?
Yes, Colantonio, sixteen Morrison Avenue. And tonight is not gonna be about the stop sign. I give you guys a break. You know, in my past time, I catch squirrels and I relocated them. And I relocate them closer to the river, off of the, I guess, I-91 northbound off-ramp in the vicinity of Meadow Road. And this was on Tuesday, I guess, Monday or Tuesday last week. And I was really surprised. At the end of the ramp, on the north side of that road, next to the curbing, for about a hundred feet by two feet wide, there was rock salt. Somebody dumped rock salt. I brought it up to the police department and they said that they were gonna look into it. It's kind of crazy. I do not understand. It seems to me that rock salt costs money. But on top of that, it's not the money itself. But, you know, rock salt closer to the river, it eventually washes out there. It's not a, it's a safety concern, it seems to me. You know, it's a pollution. So, and I, and I talked with Mr. Metney, you know, a police officer, I guess, you know, and he was gonna take a look into it, but, and I don't know how much has been done because I went there yesterday again. And of course, as it rains and whatnot, you know, with the time too, it disappears. But the rock salt was still there. I mean, who could use it? I mean, it could be a private contractor, but that costs money. Is the town sends trucks to put this, this salt on the road and then they have a quota to put down, or what? I don't know. It was disturbing. And I'm just reporting it for whatever reason, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colantonio, can you tell us again where it was?
Exactly where it was, please.
We'll have the town manager look into it.
Do I have to look at you?
Yes, so we can hear you.
At the I-91 northbound off-ramp, right there opposite, like, you know, when you get to the, the ramp, at the end of the ramp...
Like by Marsh Street?
Marsh Street.
Oh, okay.
Well, but I think it's, it's like, you know, it's called another street there though. As you go there, Marsh Street and then it goes to...
But it's that exit?
Right, that exit.
Okay.
The off-ramp on 91. And there was a lot of rock salt, so, you know, I was not gonna say anything, but I says, wait a minute, you know, somebody should also know. And Whitney or Metney?
Metney.
Metney, the officer, I talked with him last week, and he was gonna take care of it for whatever, I don't know what he means, he was gonna take care of it.
Okay.
We'll take a look.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Mr. Mazarella? Thank you.
Tom Mazarella, six hundred at Walker Hill Road. I just wanted to thank the town manager for putting his multi-page budget up online for everybody to view. I'll take advantage of that. And I would ask that you ask your counterparts over at the Board of Education to do likewise. The budget presentation tonight, the snapshot of it anyways, looks like the town, on the town side, they're making every effort they can to try and keep those numbers as low as possible. And I appreciate that. But on the Board of Ed's side, it's just a big, big hole that we don't really know what's going on over there. We're just presented with a, an increase. And I understand the legalities where you're not allowed to line-by-line cut or adjust their budget. But I'd like to see some pressure put on the Board of Ed from the town council to try and work equally as hard to reduce their spending. I'm really disturbed that, you know, we're gonna breach that forty mil rate and, you know, maybe it's semantics, but it's just, it's troubling to be in one of the towns that's gonna pass that mark. I think it sends the wrong message to potential businesses that wanna move to town as well as people seeking a place to raise their family. You know, if you have a choice of forty-one mils or thirty-seven, I mean, thirty-seven, you know, looks better. I also, I realize this is not a question and answer, but I'd like if we could hear what the minimum budget requirement number is for the Board of Ed at next, at the next Because the numbers changed, I'm not sure which number is the, is the minimum budget requirement for education spending. And I also wanted to just compliment Sally Katz and the Physical Services for getting sixteen years out of a couple vehicles. And, you know, that's, that's getting your money's worth. And I'd like to see, if possible, if we could take another look at, at the master plan for vehicles. I understand you have, you target a seven-year replacement for certain vehicles, maybe just police vehicles, I'm not sure. But, you know, I think if something's well-maintained, I think you can stretch these vehicles out to get more life out of them. And it's nice to see a fleet of vehicles that, you know, with the town logo on them and they're bright and shiny and new. But I don't think, you know, maybe sixteen years is pushing it, but, you know, ten is definitely obtainable. And that might help to reduce some of our spending. And I'd like to see a better presentation when we do replace a vehicle. There seems to be this catch-all that it's exceeded its useful life and the cost of maintenance is increasing. You know, these things can be tracked. You can have an ongoing log. How many hours did our mechanics have to invest in each vehicle? What were the parts costs? What are these expensive repairs? I mean, you know, one of the vehicles had, you know, expensive brake repairs. Well, that's just routine maintenance, you know. You can, you can do that. If you're talking about replacing engines and transmissions, well, then yeah, you're probably at the point where you need to replace the vehicle. But I think we could do a better job of gathering all that information and really pinning down the cost of, of vehicles before we make the decision to replace them rather than to just say, well, it's seven years and we should try to replace the vehicles to, to maintain the integrity of the fleet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Yes, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Hazlett and I'm at one forty-one Mill Street. Just two things. One thing in particular, we actually just closed on our home last month, so I'm brand new to the Weathersfield area. I've never attended a town council meeting, but one term that was used a lot today was civic engagement. And I myself, I enjoy volunteering and I really look forward to being a part of the Weathersfield community. So thank you. And a second thing is that on Mill Street, there has been, as many of you know probably, a lot of construction. And I'm excited about different development that's moving forward in Weathersfield and also being new to owning a home and not just renting. I don't know who to contact in terms of, some of the vehicles have caused like grass to be kinda uprooted in the front. And it's not a major issue or anything. I just don't know the proper way to go about that. So I figured I would bring that up, just so maybe I could get, could get any answers. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, do we still have town calendars and, and books over there?
Yeah, there's some on the table.
Okay. All right. Carol, you may wanna get a town calendar and book over there. It has useful information for the town, including numbers to call for different issues that you may have in town. And you can call the Physical Services if you have an issue with grass being, grass or curbing. Mr. Young?
Robert Young, twenty, Copper Mill Road.
Thank you.
After hearing the town manager talk about his budget, which was very brief, of course, I wondered, you know, MDC is gonna charge you twenty-four percent or nine percent? I don't understand that issue, but towns do not pay taxes, from what I understand. We citizens pay taxes. So if your water bill is gonna go up nine percent, our water bill is gonna go up, tax included, it's gonna be more because towns don't pay taxes. And if you think you're hurting, we're all gonna be hurting worse. Now, I, I don't know how we're gonna get around this, but I, I think, I think the only way is you're gonna have to beat up the MDC, who is a very inefficient operation. They're extremely inefficient. I've followed some of their programs. And what I saw was ugly. Very expensive, what they do. But they need to be beat up terribly. Also with your, with the presentation, you had something like a sentence, Central Health District increased fifty-five hundred dollars, or some kind of number like that. It would be nice to say, the current dollars that we're spending are this, and they're gonna increase by this, and it's now gonna be a new number. It just would be easier for people to read and understand quickly if we could get that into the verbiage. Tonight you, let's see, you voted on that, whatever the heck that thing was, I forget the words, but there's thirteen of them and now there's, now there's thirty of them that are registered. And all I could think of was your fracking group. You had thirty-some towns that were all joining the fracking issue. Must be the same people, my thoughts. Tonight you spoke about automobiles. Mr. Forrest brought up a good subject about the energy, the more electric kind of a car, or a car that takes sun, you know, the sunshine and turns it into something. I mean, you guys don't like fracking, you want nothing to do with it, that's the kind of car you should be buying. And our employees don't go out at night. They're all going out during eight o'clock to five o'clock. So it's, if they're running on electric from the sun, you know, beams, that, that works for them. And you would also be, being a little more responsible to your fracking ordinance. I was talking earlier about Harford and all the money that they're now gonna gather from the rest of us. And the, the lousy Harford Current comes out why it makes sense for the state to pay Harford's debts. What a joke these people are. Don't even wanna read it. And then S&amp;P could boost cities' bond rating. Tonight you were talking about your own bond rating. And because of the big bailout, they could get a better rating just because of the game they played. Very good moves they made, and they took us all. They also took us, and they will take us. Harford to pay housing case, six-point-two-five million dollars because they were, they just got fined from the court. We'll end up paying for that as well. The judge fines seventeen hundred households improperly displaced from condemned buildings. And the, and the town of, town of Harford did wrong by them, and there's another six-point-two-five million that the rest of us are gonna pay. This whole state of Connecticut is gonna, gonna have to pick up a lot of Harford's mistakes. There was an article that I read, it was town-state, town of Shelton, the manager down there was bragging how for the last ten years, this is gonna be his tenth year that he's not going to increase his mill rate. I, I was shocked when I read it. The guy was a real, his name was Loretty, and he's also running for governor. He sounds very interesting. I mean, he somehow brings business into his community, he keeps businesses there, and he, he's able to maintain his mill rate for now ten years. We've never done that.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Can you finish up, please?
Yes. We've never done that, Mayor. You know, that would be a heck of a challenge. You know? Start off reducing your mill rate to zero and maybe even a little less. It would really help out a lot. And of course, now, in the paper, it's, it talks about waiting to get paid. Once again, Connecticut taxpayers work longer last year to pay their taxes than Americans in the other forty-nine states. They call it Tax Freedom Day when taxpayers begin working for themselves after paying federal, state, and local taxes. And here in Connecticut, it's May twenty-first, two thousand and seven. After that, we're working for ourselves. Up until then, we've worked for the tax collector. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
All in fa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Have a good night.
That was my motion. It's taken away from me.
Yeah, look the other way this time.
I made a note to put it back.
It's all right. I'm just teasing.
I don't know, Coach Laurel was pretty quick on the motion.
He was.
Hey, you leaned in something.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. This is not paint.
Have a good one.